We begin our board meetings with the singing of our national anthem. We're very honored today to have a pre-recorded video of the student orchestra from Central Memorial High School performing "O Canada." The Calgary Board of Education acknowledges the traditional territories and oral practices of the Treaty Seven nations, including the Sig Sig Kaitzitsapi, comprised of the Sigsiga, the Gaina, the Begani, and the Amska P-Begani nations. We acknowledge the Sutena nation, the Ayarhe Nakota, comprised of the Chiniki, Bear's Paw, and Good Stony nations, the Metis nation within Alberta, and all people who make their homes in the Treaty Seven region of southern Alberta. This land on which we gather is traditionally known as Moginsitis, Guccise, Winchispa, and Otusconee. As a learning organization, we are committed to advancing the truth and reconciliation calls to action focused on education for reconciliation. Oki, Davin Astare, Ambawa Stich, Tonsay, Tanishi. Bonjour, hello, and welcome to all trustees, superintendents, staff, and public participating in today's virtual public board meeting. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Ms. Minor, do you have any changes that need to be noted?
Madam Chair, there are no agenda changes to be noted for today's meeting.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for the agenda to be approved as submitted? Thank you, Trustee Close. I will now call on each of you individually to indicate whether you're in favor or opposed to the motion. Trustee Close?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Dennis?
Opposed.
Thank you. Trustee Hack?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee May?
In favor.
And Trustee Vukadinevich?
In favor.
Thank you. I also vote in favor of the motion. That is, trustees Close, Hack, May, Vukadinevich, and Bolger in favor, and trustee Dennis opposed. That motion is carried. Next on our agenda is item 3.1, 2025 ASBA Edwin Parr Award. Chief Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
With great pleasure, Chair Bolger and trustees. The Alberta School Boards Association, ASBA, the Edwin Parr Teacher Awards recognize excellent first-year teachers from across the province. Edwin Parr served as president of the Alberta School Trustees Association, now ASBA, from 1956 to 1962, and his long career in educational affairs included terms as a member of the board with the George Lake School District and as board chair of the Athabasca School Division. Parr also served on the council of the County of Athabasca from its formation in 1959 until his death in 1963. During his time as board chair, Edwin Parr instituted an annual teacher award in his school division to celebrate first-year teachers. Each year, a member of the teaching staff was chosen to receive a gold watch and a certificate for long and meritorious service. To honor his memory and to honor the profession he so dearly respected, ASBA established the Edwin Parr Teacher Award in 1964. For almost 60 years, these awards have been presented to outstanding first-year teachers. Every school board has excellent first-year teachers, teachers who deserve to be recognized for their outstanding efforts by being nominated for the Alberta School Boards Association Edwin Parr Teacher Award. ASBA encourages each school board to participate in the process leading to the selection of the 2025 recipients. Nominees for this award are first-year kindergarten to grade 12 teachers who will complete a minimum of 100 full-time equivalent days of teaching service within this current school year. In previous years, the Calgary Board of Education has identified a nominee for the district who will then be our nominee for the zone. And each zone will then select one nominee from across the zone to be the recipient of the award. ASBA has recently made an exciting change implemented for this year, where each of the metro school divisions will have a nominee, and this nominee will become a recipient of the Edwin Parr Award. This change means that the Calgary Board of Education will have an Edwin Parr Award winner, as will each of the other metro school districts if they bring forth a nominee. A zone-level celebration is hosted by each zone prior to provincial recognition by ASBA, and this year, up to 11 recipients will be recognized in alignment with the ASBA's award guide and recognized at a provincial level by ASBA. And as chief superintendent, I know that the quality of our first-year teachers across our school board are incredible, and I'm so pleased with this change and the opportunity to recognize the incredible, incredible commitment, talent, and skill exhibited on a daily basis. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Principal Consultant Jessie Hillis to share some more information.
Good afternoon, Chair Bolger, trustees, chief superintendent Pittman, superintendents, CBE staff, guests, and Edwin Parr nominee. We're incredibly grateful for this opportunity to celebrate an incredibly talented first-year teacher. Throughout December, January, and February, we invited principals to submit nominations for outstanding first-year teachers in their schools. We have five teachers who have been nominated for this prestigious award. We also have many outstanding teachers at the beginning of their careers who were brought forward, however, have taught too many days in our classrooms to be considered for the award. The Calgary Board of Education has a strong, dedicated, and deeply caring teaching team supporting student learning across our amazing diversity. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the Edwin Parr Selection Committee. Earlier this month, four principals from across the CBE joined me in reviewing the nomination packages of our nominees. Thank you to Deborah Bradbury at Hampton School, Brenna Fraser at Woodbine School, Kenneth Greenlaw at John Ware School, and Leslie Goodwin at Dr. Gladys Akerberg School for joining our committee reviewing the nominations and engaging in thoughtful and professional conversations around each nominee. Each nominee brought with them unique strengths and contributions to their classrooms and school communities. Their stories were a wonderful representation of their own professional contributions, as well as the strength of our new teachers within the Calgary Board of Education. We would like to publicly recognize all those nominated for this awards. There are Owen Schrider, RT Alderman, Jillian Ramage, Peter Lawheed School, Kristen Horn, Hidden Valley School, Hannah Reid at Mahogany School. The selection committee worked through a collaborative and professional conversation grounded in our scoring criteria for each candidate. This rich discussion led to reflections about the nominees in relation to the teaching quality standard and their work within their school communities. After all the conversations and scoring was completed, the committee had decided on this year's nominee. We are so proud of what she brings to her school community, including her students, their families, and her colleagues. She's a teacher that the CBE is proud to put forward for this award. To share with you more about our nominee, I would like to invite to our virtual podium the principal of Thomas B. Riley School, Tiffany Austin.
Good morning, esteemed members of the Board of Trustees. It is my great honor to introduce Hannah Prasad, an extraordinary educator who has already made a profound impact in her first year of teaching at the Calgary Board of Education, and more specifically, at Thomas B. Riley School. From the moment she stepped into the classroom, Hannah has demonstrated an exceptional ability to engage, inspire, and uplift her students, embodying the values of innovation, inclusivity, and lifelong learning. Hannah teaches drama and foods, but her influence extends far beyond the curriculum. She creates an environment where students feel safe, valued, and encouraged to express themselves. Whether guiding students through a theatrical performance or introducing them to new culinary experiences, she ensures that learning is not only meaningful, but also deeply connected to real-world experiences. Through her thoughtful approach, she fosters confidence, creativity, and a strong sense of community. What truly sets Hannah apart is that she believes wholeheartedly in the meaning of the word "team." At the end of last year, our foods and drama teacher went on an unexpected leave a few weeks before our big performance of Shrek Jr., that we had been planning for all year. When Hannah received a phone call for an interview, it turned out she had done this performance before and was more than willing to step in to help. Not only did she step in, she went above and beyond working with other staff members to make her performance one of the highlights of the entire year, her students, staff, and parents. She has continued this on this year as well and is busily preparing for our next performance of High School Musical Junior in May. In addition, Hannah volunteered her time to coach basketball and even offered to coach volleyball as well if needed. Hannah is a teacher that is so willing to give up her time and energy to every aspect of our school. This is a teacher who deeply understands the meaning of investing in students in every aspect. The payoff is that she has a deep respect from students, staff, and parents. Hannah also has a tremendous commitment to continuous growth, both for herself and for her students. She actively seeks new strategies, collaborates with colleagues, and adapts her teaching to meet the evolving needs of her classroom. Her dedication to professional development is a reflection of the very values she instills in her students: curiosity, adaptability, and a love of learning. In just one year, Hannah has already left a lasting impression on her students, colleagues, and our school as a whole. Her passion, creativity, and unwavering dedication make her a truly deserving recipient of the Edwin Parr Award. It is my privilege to introduce Hannah Prasad, an exceptional educator and an inspiration to us all.
Thank you. It would be my turn then. Yay! Good morning. I'm truly honored to accept the Edwin Parr Award. It feels just surreal to be here before you and share my gratitude for this recognition. I hope my humor comes through in this speech. It's a little different with Zoom, but I hope you laugh at least once. That's my goal. This achievement is not just personal. It has been a testament to this entire school and the community at Thomas B. Riley, where I, as Tiffany has mentioned, have the privilege of teaching drama and foods to our wonderfully unique grade seven, eight, and nine students. Special thank you to Tiffany. I could not have asked for a better and more supportive principal. Your encouragement and support has been invaluable, and I'm so lucky to be a part of the community that you have turned Thomas B. Riley into. So, I remember when our vice principal, Davina Shaw, called me asking if I would like to interview for a temporary contract. I was so excited. I actually still have her voicemail saved on my phone because I was like, this is it. I've made it. I'm gonna get a contract. And it has been one of the best decisions I have ever made. And I'm just so lucky to work alongside the most supportive staff and teachers. So, now I'd like to share with you some of my eye-opening lessons that I've learned as a first-year teacher. Consider this my crash course in the things they don't teach you in university. So, first off, let's talk about junior high kids. If you've ever wandered the halls, you'll wonder why the air feels so different. It's because they're smelly. Really. They're smelly, and we love them. But it's like a science experiment gone horribly wrong. And some days, I'm convinced that my nose is a superpower, and I can smell them from miles away. But it really adds to the charm of teaching junior high. One key lesson I've learned is that what doesn't work on paper, sorry, what works on paper doesn't always translate to the classroom. I thought that I would be a master chef with all my beautifully and meticulously created lesson plans, but sometimes it's more like a half-baked souffle, fluffy on the outside and a complete flop on the inside. Regardless of how successful my lesson plans are, I've realized that building connections with my students is what makes my life and their lives a lot easier and our learning even deeper. Who knew that they would enjoy food safety as much as I do my food puns? So, I've also realized that it's perfectly okay to not be perfect, which is something I've struggled with. In university, they teach you to be perfect. I often think about my lessons after I've taught them, reflecting on them, how I can make them better, enhance engagement, and make them more fun. I teach CTFs. That's what I'm here for. So, after all, if my classroom was flawless, I'd probably have to get a new job. And after I've told you how smelly junior high is, who would want to subject themselves to that? Speaking of flexibility, I've learned that sometimes I have to adapt in the moment. For example, I had to adapt the recipe on the fly because one of my lovely and clumsy grade seven students dropped every single egg on the floor, and they smashed. Not a single one survived. That kid has a talent in his own. But sometimes you have to roll with the punches. Teaching is often described as a calling, and I wholeheartedly agree. It's a vocation that demands passion, dedication, and an unwavering belief in the potential of every student. This year, I learned that my foundation of teaching stems from the fundamental principle to truly know my students. I believe that the heart of education lies in the relationships we build. I myself, growing up in northeast Calgary, where English is not everyone's primary language, was taught that connection does not limit us to the language that we speak. It's about the experience and the moments we share and being present with one another. When students trust me, we embark on a beautiful journey of exploration, creativity, and growth. And let's face it, I need to figure out who sneaks in snacks into my drama class, and if they're comfortable with me, then they're not sticking up for each other. So, let's talk about coaching, like Tiffany mentioned. I never imagined that I would find myself coaching 12 junior high boys, let alone volunteering to be the head coach for a junior boy basketball team. As much as I thought winning was going to matter, in the end, it really didn't. From one student dramatically claiming that the other team was paying the refs and to one who cried almost every game, I quickly realized that coaching wasn't just about basketball. It was about connection, and it brought me closer to my students and the school community. Honestly, that alone felt like a win. Success for each student looks different. A personal example I'm gonna share with you is I was fortunate enough to share a space with a group of grade nine students. A project I do in drama is storytelling. Students write and read their own stories. I hold miniature workshops that teach them how to build their stories, read aloud, captivate an audience. One student, who is just a brilliant writer, was so nervous about speaking in front of the class. I don't think I even saw her talk in the hallways very much. But after the workshops, she decided to read her story. And when I tell you that you could hear a pin drop while she read is an understatement. She captivated her audience and brought her story's emotions to life. Her peers flooded her with applause and recognition, and this is a memory that will forever be etched in my heart. And I assure you, as a stereotypical drama teacher, I cried the entire time. So, success also feels like celebrating small wins and individuals for who they are. This year, I also held a potluck for one of my classes at the last day of the term. We sat around a large table and drew delicious food that they prepared and laughed about the silly things that happened while we cooked. I often think about the unique stories and talents our students have and what was shared that day, and how we can foster and nurture each other and make all the experiences worth it, and we treat them just as they deserve to be treated, because these experiences make them who they are. It is my responsibility to nurture those strengths and provide them with tools to help them succeed. What I did expect this year was getting involved in our musical production. All the tears from basketball prepared me for all the tears of all the drama students. And let me tell you, there is never a drought. This experience has been nothing short of magical. The enthusiasm and just creativity and energy of our students inspire me daily. Little do the students know that I picked High School Musical Junior to live my own Troy Bolton fantasy, to go from basketball coach to musical director, but we'll keep that between us. They don't need to know. The difference between students who do sports and drama is remarkable, but I wouldn't have it any other way. I was able to convince some of our athletes to actually audition for our show. And just to let you know, some of them have some main roles, so that's pretty exciting. It's amazing that I got to help create relationships for students who might have never crossed paths. Together, we are not just putting on a show. We are creating memories and building confidence that will last a lifetime. As I reflect on my first year of teaching, I reminded that the role of an educator is ever-evolving. Each day presents new challenges, opportunities, and lessons. I'm constantly learning from my students, who teach me as much as I teach them. I know it's a cliche, but it's a cliche I live every day. The resilience, creativity, and determination help me strive for excellence in my practice. They honestly keep me on my toes. In a world that feels often so divided, I believe that education has the power to unite us. It allows us to celebrate our differences and learn from one another. As I continue my journey as an educator, I'm committed to fostering an inclusive environment where every student feels they belong. I want my classroom to be a safe haven where curiosity thrives and imagination flourishes. Looking ahead, I see how important it is not to grow as an educator, but to support others in their journey, as I've been so wonderfully supported here. One day, I hope to support first-year teachers and maybe even one day become a mentor, if I'm lucky. As the education landscape continues to evolve, I know reflecting and adapting will be the key to staying effective in the classroom. I will not learn brain rot. That is not one way I will be effective. I promise. Whether adjusting to new learning styles, integrating technology, or finding innovative ways to engage my students, I'm committed to embracing change with an open mind. I just want to thank you once again for this incredible honor. I am so excited, and I've been trying not to cry this entire time. And I'm so excited to continue my passion at Thomas B. Riley School, and I look forward to a beautiful journey ahead with my students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. Trustees, do we have any questions or comments on the report? Trustee Close? Oh my goodness, Hannah. You know, we might have laughed, but I think we're all probably teary-eyed. And I think that, I know for me, and I'm pretty sure for all trustees, this is probably our favorite agenda item of the year because it's so uplifting and so inspiring. And I need to share honestly, I think you're already a mentor. Just from reading the answers to the questions from your colleagues, I think they've learned as much from you as you are learning from them. But one of the things I did smile at, I thought, oh my goodness, first-year teacher doing drama and foods. How cruel is that? And then I realized, just in reading some of the answers, that you have made the connections to relationships to students and being able to express themselves. That's so powerful. And I loved the magic and the synchronicity of you already having the experience with Shrek. You are meant to be where you're at and what you're doing. So, thank you for choosing CBE. We're grateful and proud. Trustee May?
Thank you. And just like each year, I'm so grateful that we have this opportunity to recognize outstanding first-year teachers. I really want to give thank you to the committee who spent their time in recommending Miss Prasad and just in recognizing all of our teachers. And so, we just have such phenomenal teachers, and having teachers ready to go from the start is just amazing and fantastic. Stepping into the classroom for the first time is no easy feat, but you have done so with passion and dedication and demonstrating commitment to the teacher quality standard and our education plan. The amount of work to connect with students in the classroom, as well as foster their interests and passions in extracurricular, is commendable. Coaching students helps build character, fosters teamwork, and truly helps to build a community. I have to share, I laughed because I was a basketball player in high school, and the smell of girls, I can only imagine the smell of boys. So, beyond even the hallways, I can only imagine the changing rooms. And so, balancing the demands of first-year teaching, directing drama productions, and coaching is no small feat, and it is one that's truly a gift to your students and makes a lifelong lasting impact. So, thank you for everything that you do, and congratulations.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, trustee Dennis?
Thank you, Chair Bolger. And I'll keep it really brief. I'm really looking forward to meeting you at the Zone Five Celebration and also in Edmonton at the Alberta School Boards Association Awards Evening in November. Congratulations on this impressive achievement. Loved hearing you talk today. I also got a little emotional, so there were moments where I thought, oh, I think she might be emotional over there, but I was already crying. But no, really wonderful. Just a couple of, just a sort of personal reflection. I'm a mom of student athletes, so my kids are already out of the K-12 world. But as a mom of student athletes, I can speak to the incredible impact that coaches had on them and their education experience. So, thank you for stepping into that. I know that's extra for you. So, really appreciate you doing that additional work in support of the growth of these students. And thank you for, again, choosing CBE and taking on junior high. You are a brave girl.
Any other comments or questions, trustees? I would request that trustee bring forward a motion regarding this report. Thank you, trustee Close.
Yes, the Board of Trustees approves Hannah Prasad as recipient of the 2025 Alberta School Boards Association Edwin Parr Award for the Calgary Board of Education.
Thank you. Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves Hannah Prasad as recipient of the 2025 Alberta School Boards Association Edwin Parr Award for the Calgary Board of Education. Trustee Close, would you please open debate?
Absolutely. I'm thrilled too. And just a couple of comments. One is, I also really appreciated the comments throughout the answers to the questions around pulling the whole school together, not only the TLC program, but ALP and PLP. Like, that grabs everyone's heart, right? When you're talking about students in a community. But I do want to take a quick moment to read something that came from the answer of question one. And it was from your fellow colleague of the PLP program, who also co-coached basketball with you. Hannah is an exceptional first-year teacher who demonstrates outstanding dedication, inclusivity, and leadership. This year, Hannah took on leadership roles as the head coach of the junior boys basketball team and the director of our school musical. When she was coaching, I consistently saw her foster a positive team culture, which contributed to a dedicated and motivated team. In the musical, she created a welcoming environment for all students by encouraging participation from those who might not typically engage in extracurricular activities. Hannah's passion for teaching is evident, and she is a positive role model who builds strong relationships with students. Parents, not making you laugh, am I? And staff. It's okay to cry, while actively contributing to the school community. Students frequently visit her classroom, and her laughter can often be heard down the hall, reflecting the joyful and supportive environment she creates. Her enthusiasm and dedication to student success are unmatched. Congratulations on behalf of all of us. And I know that each Board of Trustee member will be as enthusiastic as your application is. Thank you.
Are there other trustees wishing to enter first round of debate? Trustee Hack?
Sure. I know we say a lot of the time, location, location, location. Certainly plays a role here, as Thomas B. Riley and the support that she has received. But I know from personal experience as a teacher that it is truly about connection, connection, connection. And we couldn't have asked for a better recipient this year to speak from her heart about the massive difference that she's already made within her first year of teaching. So, I would enthusiastically support this motion.
Thank you. Any other trustees? We'll move into second round of debate then. Trustee Close, do you wish to close debate?
Nothing further to add, just gratitude and congratulations once again.
I will now call on each of you individually to indicate whether you're in favor or opposed to the motion. Trustee Close?
In favor.
Trustee Dennis.
In favor.
Trustee Hack.
In favor.
Trustee May.
In favor.
Trustee Vukadinovich.
In favor.
I also vote in favor of the motion that is carried unanimously. So, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, Hannah, huge congratulations to you. And thank you to your administration and everyone who worked throughout this process to get you where you are. And we're so grateful that you're with CBE and for the great work you're doing in our schools. And we look forward to seeing you at Zone 5 and the Alberta School Boards Association Award Celebration in the fall. So, thank you very much. Our next business deals with results focus. Today on our agenda is the annual monitoring of Results III: Citizenship. Chief Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Thank you, Chair Bolger and trustees. We're pleased today to present the 2023-2024 Monitoring Report for Results III: Citizenship, outlining our results as an organization in ensuring that each CBE student becomes a responsible citizen. Based on the report card indicators, which includes data from the Division III Student Results Reporting Indicators and from the percentage of kindergarten to grade 12 students demonstrating an understanding of social studies issues, information, and ideas, we continue to see strong results. For our Division III students, we saw increases in the overall levels of success for working and collaborating effectively with others and for exercising their democratic rights and responsibilities within the learning community to 98.1% and 98.7%, respectively. Demonstrating respect and appreciation for diversity held steady at 99%. And while strong results at this level do not lend themselves easily to areas for improvement specifically, they do provide a solid foundation in the work ahead to further refine and explore board values around empathy, compassion, and diverse worldviews, and how working collaboratively to resolve conflict can serve the pursuit of the common good. It should be celebrated as well that results for demonstrating an understanding of social studies issues, information, and ideas remains very high at 93.8%, having seen only a small and statistically insignificant 0.4% decrease over the previous year's results. These results, again, are within a context of increased enrollment, in particular, and in particular, the number of English as an additional language learners who have joined the CBE in the last few years and whom we've discussed on other reports as well. When we consider the level of academic language required for many of the topics and issues connected to social studies, as well as the diverse perspectives and experiences some of these learners have brought with them, many coming to Canada as refugees, maintaining results at this level is a notable achievement. With that in mind, the student evidence presented in the report continues to tell us we can be very proud of the work of CBE students and staff. At this time, I'll turn it over to Superintendent of School Improvement Jennifer Turner to provide further highlights and a few details regarding the report.
Thank you, Chief Pittman. And before we get into some further details of the report, it is important to note that out of 12 indicators used to measure progress in Results III, eight are tied to CBE student survey questions. Results III was a minor focus for the 2023-2024 survey. And as such, the relevant questions that would have informed the summary measures for seven of these indicators were not included in the survey. As well, results reporting for citizenship on student report cards was suspended for kindergarten through grade six students as an earlier decision of the board. This means that only students in grades seven, eight, and nine receive report card assessments for the three results report indicators that are typically linked to report card marks. What this means essentially is that the data in this report primarily reflects results reporting for Division III students on three indicators: the percentage of students demonstrating an understanding of social studies issues, information, ideas, based on their school report cards, and data from environmental stewardship questions in the CBE survey. And this was collected from students in grades five, six, eight, nine, 11, and 12. When we consider the context shared regarding rapidly increasing enrollment and an influx of students who are learning English as an additional language, often at lower language proficiency levels, these results are something both to celebrate as well as to provide clear direction in the work ahead. Therefore, what you're going to see in this report is a focus of actions related to support our work for our EAL learners. We have area learning teams and school learning teams processes to support students and families and improve practice related to cultural approaches for instruction. This focus will provide support for both developing language and also to ensure that our students have access to academic vocabulary that is necessary in social studies and in supporting a cultural understanding of the Canadian social studies context overall, while honoring the rich and diverse international experiences that students are bringing with them. One other area that I'd like to highlight is the environmental stewardship summary measure, which continues to be a key area of focus for us. Overall, we've seen an improvement in this area compared to last year, although the results remain relatively low overall. A closer look at these results reveals that the low results continue to be in the middle school years. There's a significant gap between students having conversations about environmental issues and encouraging their peers to reduce, reuse, and recycle at nearly 43% and 50%, respectively. And that students report that they are currently personally reducing, reusing, and recycling at 82%. Three key factors that may contribute to these results are: First, environmental stewardship content is specifically taught as an explicit part of classroom conversation in grade four and in grade 10. But these grades aren't a part of the CBE student survey. Second, the language in the curriculum has evolved beyond the traditional reduce, reuse, and recycle, moving towards language focused on resource management and environmental stewardship. And as a result, the survey questions aren't fully aligned with the language that's currently being used. And finally, and perhaps most significantly, our students in middle school are typically navigating their identity, often conforming to peer norms. And while they may practice sustainable actions themselves, encouraging peers to join them is potentially less likely, and it may conflict with their desire to fit in socially or emotionally. And so, that's an area that may be a challenge. Recognizing CBE's ongoing commitment to improved sustainability remains a key priority to our work in moving forward and to ensure that our students grow to be responsible and active stewards, both of the environment and of public resources, as part of being a responsible citizen. To this end, the focus will continue to build student confidence and build student leadership, encouraging them to take on a more active role in peer influence through our work, through the middle school, developing the middle school learner identity. And this is through social-emotional instruction and learning to support conversations with their peers. Additionally, we will be providing both support and resources for the new science curriculum, which emphasizes the concepts of sustainability with specific professional learning and system initiatives like our system Read Aloud for Environmental Sustainability and our ongoing work to support Indigenous ways of learning and learning from the land. And finally, working towards measures that may align more closely with the curriculum content in this area may help provide better insights and actions as we move forward to support this area of focus. Chair Bolger, trustees, at this time, we would welcome your questions as it relates to the 2023-2024 Monitoring Report for Results III: Citizenship. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Turner. Trustees have received and reviewed the Chief Superintendent's report regarding the annual monitoring of Results III: Citizenship for the 2023-2024 school year. It is now the board's responsibility to consider the report as evidence of reasonable organizational progress in this results area. I now invite any trustee who has questions about this monitoring report to offer them to the Chief Superintendent. I encourage you to limit your questions to those that will assist the board to make decision regarding whether reasonable progress has been made to the ultimate achievement of this results policy. I remind trustees that the emphasis for monitoring results is not on compliance, but rather on reasonable progress. Trustees, questions? Trustee Hack.
Yeah, I just want to say incredible results again with citizenship. I do have a question just on how some of this is measured. So, I'm looking on page 1430. I'm just wondering if you could clarify what is meant by students who successfully complete those courses? The indicator talks about demonstrating an understanding of social studies issues measured by school report cards. At 93.8% of students who demonstrate this, I just want to understand who falls into that? And where did the 6.2%, who doesn't demonstrate an understanding? And how is that measured?
Through the chair, I'll take that question. So, the indicator percentage of students successfully demonstrating understanding of social studies issues, information, and ideas, as measured by the school report card, is a combination of two pieces of data. So, the first piece would be for grades K to nine. It is the average score of all social studies STEMS per student and being at least two or above. So, what this means specifically is that for the K to six students, we take an average of the two indicators from each student as their mark. And for the seven to nine, we take the average from the four indicators as the mark. And so, from this is the percentage of students in K to nine with an average of two or greater. So, they'd be part of that, I think it's 93.7%. And then, the other groups, so for grades 10 to 12, it's any student that's achieving a mark of 50% or higher. So, as you're highlighting, a little over 6% of students wouldn't fall in that. And so, those students would either be in K to nine that didn't have an average of two, or a high school student who didn't reach the 50%. Or it could be a student that is still potentially meeting, however, they have a different indicator on their report card. So, on a STEM, it might say IPP, or it could be EAL. So, I think I'm answering the second part of your question. That would make up a little over 6% of students that might not have reached that threshold.
Thank you. Trustee Dennis.
Thank you so much, Chair. First of all, thank Superintendent Turner for those excellent opening remarks. Really appreciated that detailed summary. So, thank you so much for that. I'm in particular happy to see that we are, I guess, advancing beyond the reduce, reuse, recycle conversation in big ways. So, really glad to see that. But my first question is related to information found on page 17 and 18 of 30. And there is that triangle graph there, and it does actually say reduce, reuse, recycle, self, and others. But there's another category there called environmental conversations. And so, I'm just curious about what are we asking students to reflect upon under the environmental conversations question theme? I took a look through the appendix, and that didn't really help me out. So, I'm asking the question here.
Perfect answer. Through the chair, so for the environmental stewardship summary measures, as highlighted by Superintendent Turner, that are asked for students in grades five, six, eight, nine, 11, and 12, the three questions are: I talk to my fellow students about ways we can protect the environment. The second one is, I try to get others to reduce, reuse, and recycle in my school. And the third one is, I use resources responsibly by reducing, reusing, and recycling. So, that's why you see that triangle. And the third question, our students are doing that work. And then, the first two questions, maybe some of our students aren't as comfortable in going to their peer and saying, hey, why are you not being a greater environmental steward? So, as highlighted by Superintendent Turner in those opening remarks.
Trustees, any additional comments or questions? Trustee Hack.
Just want to do a quick follow-up. I think my camera or mic might have cut out. And we're just discussing a little bit about the IPP. So, if a student has an IPP, are they counted in regards to the social studies outcomes that we're talking about? Are they counted for, against, or just not part of the dataset? I just missed that piece. Sorry. Thank you.
They are part of the dataset. So, let me just give a concrete example. If a student was in grade four and they had EAL on their two social studies indicators, then it would indicate that they were not part of the group in grade four, almost 94%.
Trustee Dennis.
Thank you. My next question is related to information on page 2430. There, see, there's a reference to a book study under professional development. So, just curious what that looks like system-wide, and I guess I'm assuming that it's system-wide, and I don't know that for sure. And wondering if that's related to comments under the Structures and Processes section under System Read Aloud via Microsoft Teams. So, if that's what the book study looks like. And just related to that, how would we determine what resources to use for an activity like that?
Through the chair. Thank you, trustee Dennis. So, these are two different things. So, the first part of your question is in regard to the EAL book study. And that is actually set up by our EAL service unit, who offers a professional development book study opportunity to teachers. And they've done this for several years. And this is an optional professional learning opportunity open to teachers who are interested in coming together to learn more about, and this year was around culture, linguistics, social identities. And specifically this year, they focused, there was a five, individuals came together, five different looking at a book called Inside Out and Back Again. And I think there was a total of approximately 116 ATA teachers that came together between February and April. And within their connecting over those five times, they talked about various topics relevant to teachers that were explored. They discussed strategies among the group of participants. And all the topics focused on building culturally responsive learning environments. So, a specific example in connecting with the director was looking at creating a warm and welcoming, inclusive environment. And then, in regards to the system Read Alouds, this is actually when our chief superintendent and our superintendents, like myself, get the opportunity to actually join our classes through Teams and read picture books. And so, this could be in relation to, you know, World Literature Day, or it could be an environmental theme and pieces like that. And so, we're really supported by within-school improvement around choosing those resources. So, for example, the EAL resource, our specialists would come together and look at current research. And then, I know in my case, when I've been part of those Read Alouds, that our early learning team has supported in picking excellent books for our students that relate to the themes that we're trying to get across at that time. Hope that helps.
Trustee Dennis.
Thank you so much. Quick comment. What a joy to be able to read to kids. Well, what a great opportunity. So, thank you just to the system for making that happen. That's amazing. My final question on this report is, what is the EAL Designate Network? Is this something that is new or something that has evolved kind of over time? And wondering how that network is supported centrally and in individual schools?
Certainly through the chair. So, each school has identified an EAL lead, and it's a teacher or school-based administrative who's connected to the system, EAL Designate Network. So, it's kind of like a conduit to our central team, to our schools, and so that we can receive information of the needs at the school and also to maximize professional learning and support from the central level as well. and also to maximize professional learning and support from the central level as well. The designate officers as the conduit. And at the school-based level, the EAL designate provides leadership role in supporting next steps for programming, provides expertise and monitoring our ESL benchmarks alongside staff members. So I might say they're kind of that go-to person at their, at their school. This is actually not new and my understanding is it's been part of our structure for several years. It definitely existed in my work as an education director as well. However, we have adjusted the name to align from the shift of ESL to EAL. And so really they're, they're a conduit. They receive support from the central team and then also support at their schools as well.
Thank you, Superintendent Nelson. Are there any other comments or questions from trustees? Okay. Well, any trustees who wish to bring forward a motion regarding exception or commendation should provide the motions to the corporate secretary and to all trustees by noon Thursday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. This item will be placed on the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five agenda for the board's consideration. Next on our agenda is the annual monitoring of operational expectation seven, communication with and support for the board. Chief Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Thank you, Chair Boulder and trustees. Today presenting the monitoring report for operational expectation seven. And the data collected for this monitoring report applies to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. The purpose of this report is to provide evidence that the chief superintendent supported the board by ensuring sufficient, accurate and timely information so the board can meet their mandate as the Board of Trustees. To ensure the board is able to meet this mandate, GC six E outlines an annual work plan each year. All nine scheduled operational expectation monitoring reports were presented consistent with the board's annual work plan containing sufficient information for the board to determine compliance with the operational expectations. Trends, facts and other information were communicated through a variety of presentations and sessions spread throughout the school year as specifically outlined within this monitoring report. And at this point, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. The operational expectations policies define the degree of authority transferred to the chief superintendent as she makes day-to-day decisions. The Board of Trustees has previously reviewed the reasonable interpretation of this operational expectation and approved that the chief superintendent reasonably understands the values underlying this policy and that the indicators previously provided by the chief superintendent are acceptable to the board. I now invite any trustee who has questions about the report to offer them to the chief superintendent. Let me remind the board that the purpose of considering this report is to satisfy the board that its policy values were complied with during the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I encourage trustees to limit the questions and comments in support of monitoring. Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Chair. A little rapid there with my raised hand. I apologize. In this virtual environment, I was excited to get my question in. So my question is related to item seven point two point two and in particular, the monthly written updates to the Board of Trustees from the chief superintendent. I know that we appreciate receiving those updates and in particular, you know, just with the transparency that we have with our public, the fact that those are shared on our public agenda. Also would note that often a trustee will pull that report from consent to, you know, really dig into extra information that might be contained there. So we have an incredibly busy system. There's a lot going on at the CBE. Lots of adjustment happening, lots of innovation taking place. So just curious about how those items that are selected to appear on the report, how does that happen and how does the system decide what the chief should share with the Board of Trustees and the public?
Through the chair. Thank you. And certainly I would acknowledge the incredible work that's happening on a regular basis across our system. And so the determination of what meets a threshold linked to highlighting that work for the board in a public meeting is an important component. You will recall, and while this is, this was last year's monitoring report, that the structure of the chief superintendent update has previously and for quite some time been aligned specifically to the goals of the education plan and was structured in a specific way to demonstrate and reflect ongoing actions that aligned to those particular goals as approved by the board. So that was a guiding structure. The actual process is across all service units. So across school improvement reflective of work across schools, across finance, technology services, HR. All of our service units then reflect on what actions are being taken or system-wide activities that may be underway. While many times you see a trend linked to professional learning, linked to resource development or programming adjustments, expansions, enhancement or partnerships as examples that you see within the chief superintendent update. You also see examples of decisions linked to operations and maintenance at times or different schools or transportation with books on buses. So those are important elements to ensure that we're also able to highlight the community of work and not all actions are necessarily directly tied to a specific education plan goal, though they align to the values of the board. Going forward, and as I've indicated in previous board meeting or at a previous board meeting, we have made the adjustment to better align to all of the operational expectations as laid out by the board, which that then results in a greater degree of awareness across all service units linked to the actions to better align to board policy and direction. And so that is a shift we've made, though not reflected in this report, will be reflected in next year's reporting continues to guide and adjust the manner of information provided.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent Pittman. Trustees, any other comments or questions on this report? We now come to the point where trustees are asked to identify their intentions to bring forward any motions related to compliance with this operational expectation. Any trustees who wish to bring forward a motion regarding exception to finding the evidence to be compliant or a motion of commendation for exceptional performance in a particular area should provide the corporate secretary and all trustees with the proposed motions by noon Thursday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. If there are no exceptions or commendations, then this item will be placed on the consent agenda for the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five board meeting with the motion that the Board of Trustees approves that the chief superintendent is in compliance with the provisions of OE seven, communication with and support for the board. Next on our agenda is item eight point one, revised CBE boundary adjustment, Lewisburg and Huxley. Chief Superintendent Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Chair Boulders and Chair Boulder and trustees. This afternoon, I'm presenting the second report this year proposing the adjustment of Calgary Board of Education boundaries. And you'll recall that a first report was submitted to you last October and it proposed the inclusion of a portion of the city of Calgary communities of Lewisburg and Huxley into the CBE boundaries. Upon review of the request by Alberta Education staff, they advised that that request could not be acted upon due to a technicality, explaining why this matter is now being brought back to you today for consideration. And to provide more details on this, I'll invite Superintendent Breton to guide us through the boundary adjustment decision before you today.
Chair and trustees. To explain the technicality referred to by Chief Superintendent Pittman, it was identified by Alberta Education that in requesting the remainder of the community of Lewisburg, the CBE's request did not align with how this land quarter was originally annexed by the city. The CBE's request was focused on the developing Lewisburg community to ensure students from this community can attend a CBE school starting in twenty twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, of course, the next school year. However, we were advised that the Knowles Creek area structure plan zone immediately next to the Lewisburg community must also be included in our request. Doing so would then align the CBE request with the way the land quarter was originally annexed by the city. Although the CBE wouldn't typically request inclusion of an undeveloped area like the Knowles Creek area structure plan, the risk of doing so is minimal since the area in question is currently the subject of planning work by the city and as a result, won't see individual homes be constructed at distances associated with rural school board transportation funding kind of distances. When development does commence, the density will immediately be that which is normal for the city of Calgary and in alignment with how metro boards receive transportation funding. Unfortunately, the request to incorporate the remainder of the community of Huxley within the CBE boundaries was held up because of how it was requested at the same time as the remainder of the Lewisburg community, explaining why it is included once again in this report, even though no changes to the request is included in the report before you. Fortunately, there are currently no students in these portions of these Calgary communities. That being said, discussions with developers do indicate students will be present commencing the next school year, twenty-five, twenty-six, explaining why this request is being brought back to you for consideration. So with that being said, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Trustee May?
Thank you. So it sounds like this was a technicality, but I'm wondering, the city is continuing to expand their borders and create new communities on the suburbs. Do we see this as an ongoing issue with needing full quarters? Is this part of an area structure plan conversation that we can have so that we don't run into this issue in the future?
Through the chair. That is correct. What you've just expressed there in terms of having to ensure that our future requests align with the full quarter parcel of land that was annexed originally by the city now. We, I think, have been lucky in the past and not have stumbled across this because of how the communities typically have been aligned with the full quarters. But in this case, we actually find that the Lewisburg community straddles half of that quarter, kind of like a diagonal cut through it. And then this Knowles Creek area structure plan, so a community to be named at some point in the future by the city, is the remaining part of that quarter.
Trustee Hack?
Just a follow-up. We mentioned the area structure plan. Can you give me a little bit more information of what does that, what elements does that typically include? Like what, what does that look like?
Through the chair. So an area structure plan is something that is developed by the city. It's a long-term planning document intended to guide the growth and development of undeveloped lands into a complete community. The ASPs include a land use concept outlining proposed locations of schools, environmentally significant areas, transportation networks. So where the major roads, pathways, et cetera, might lie. Those major land uses in terms of what sections will be residential, what will be commercial, what will be industrial. It will also consider what the population projections are, job estimates, number of residential units. So these are all factors that are included within that.
Go ahead, Trustee Hack.
I hear you mention future school sites and I don't know how much we know about the area structure plan or if we know anything about it yet in relation to these. But I'm just wondering, as, you know, as our communities grow, we have massive need for schools. Are there any future school sites that the CBE would be entitled to on land title, et cetera, for within this, this area? Specifically, I'll ask about Lewisburg because it would fall under my area here.
Through the chair. Yes, for Lewisburg, it's already got a name as far as a community. It's being developed as such. And we know that we have two CBE school sites. That is one elementary and one middle school site. So we have those defined much more clearly. As far as the Knowles Creek area structure plan, that work will be underway as part of that, of the area structure plan development. And at some point in time, we'll identify based on things like the projections of population within that community, the number of sites that would be allocated to the CBE, to Calgary Catholic and potentially Franco-Sud.
Trustee Dennis?
Thank you so much, Chair. So interesting request. I don't know that I've ever seen us run into this previously where we've had to, I guess, reiterate or re-ask or adjust a previous ask. So curious about that and wondering if it says something to do with the intersection of Order of Council three, 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 two, zero, zero, seven and the requirement of the Government of Alberta to only consider boundary adjustments to full quarters. So it's clear that yes, the GOA is requiring that. But I'm wondering what the order in Council three, 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 two, zero, zero, seven plays into that.
Through the chair. So the order in council in question was that larger annexation order that ultimately saw some Rocky View lands transferred to the city of Calgary. The community of Lewisburg was part of that. It was part of that annexation order. And, and again, that annexation order has the legal description for those lands. So when we look back at what we have done in the past in terms of requesting annexation or adjustments, I should say, to the CBE boundaries so that it slowly gets closer to what the actual city of Calgary borders are. What we've discovered is that in twenty twenty-three, there was actually an instance where a similar circumstance arose. But the way that it was explained to us by Alberta Education did not really get to the crux of the matter around those land quarters. And so if you do go back to your records, you will see in twenty twenty-three that there was a similar instance where we did have to come back to the Board of Trustees to request a slightly larger area. That area and that we might as well take the entire community as opposed to just a portion of the community. But upon now having encountered this instance where we are now looking to take the entire community and being told, but now you've also got to take this future community as well. We, it's, it's come to, to be clear for us now that it was a land border issue at the foundation of that previous request that had to go back to you in twenty twenty-three.
Trustees, any other questions? Trustee Hack, go ahead.
Yeah, so I know we had, we had talked about or mentioned that any possible students living within there. There are residents moving in, is my understanding. What would be the timing required to have this go back to ministry from the Board of Trustees? Like what, what would be a timing, I guess, cutoff or issue where we, we could ensure that we have a smooth transition for students entering CBE?
Through the chair. This is ultimately dependent upon a decision. Once you have made your decision here today, it is dependent upon a decision of the Minister of Education. And that, of course, is outside of our control. And we have had instances in the past And we have had instances in the past where these kinds of requests have been processed relatively quickly. There are other times where they've extended and have come very close to not being in place in time for the the new school year. So very, very difficult to crystal ball this, it depends on what the priorities of the government are at the time and how quickly they can um attend to the the request before them.
Thank you Superintendent Britton. Uh trustee May.
Thank you. So it sounds like we could have students attending the CBE within the next, like the upcoming school year. Um so obviously, that'd just be probably a couple as it starts to grow. Um, do we have room in the northeast for these students as the population continues to grow in the next, you know, two to five years? Do we have the space to accommodate them?
Through the chair. As far as having space within CBE schools, yes, our schools are becoming fuller and fuller. However, we are also enacting a large number of different measures to help rebalance enrollment to ensure that every student that is within, that is resident of the CBE boundaries uh receives that education that they deserve. And so they might not necessarily, depending on these schools around the Lewisburg community, and I don't happen to know what CBE schools would be closest. Um there are instances that maybe they might not be attending the closest school, the closest CBE school to their home. Um but rest assured that there is capacity, continues to be capacity within CB schools and measures such as grade configuration changes, boundary changes, modular classroom relocations that you have approved, modular classroom um additions that the province has approved based on your requests and ultimately, of course, new school requests that we are so hopeful that sometime this month we'll be hearing from the province um will allow us to continue to be able to accommodate all those students that are resident within our boundaries.
Trustee Hack.
I know we're sitting at about ninety five percent full for capacity. Um can you just give me some examples of the types of decisions CB would need to make if schools consistently operate at or above a hundred percent? As many of our schools are. And if we've reached a hundred percent capacity or nearing that as a whole at two hundred fifty one schools or whatever we had at that point, what measures were taken in response to that?
Through the chair. Many of the examples I provided in the previous response apply here. Certainly, we'll start off with, as as we see um our utilization rates become much higher than the provincially recommended value for a well utilized school being eighty five percent, and again, system wide utilization rate ninety five percent, as you've indicated. Um we've been implementing many of these measures immediately, knowing that these are required and and it takes a certain amount of time for some of them to also come into play um and to for the difference to be felt. And so existing school space optimizations comes to mind as one of those first levers that we have. And the CBE has invested and is continuing to invest um large sums of money in converting um learning commons, staff rooms, various spaces within schools that previously were maybe not utilized for instructional purposes, but now they are because we need to maximize those spaces every place we can within schools and communities, I should say, that are that are producing so many children. Um we also can consider things like a program relocation to maximize space in those in those places where it's needed most. And I think most recently to the um board motion to relocate the home education program out of Windsor Park into Bel Air School, that ultimately created space within a school and that was located where growth was was being experienced the most. Boundary adjustments, adjustments and grade configurations, again, two other areas that I've mentioned previously. And we're starting to see, I think, the benefit of some of these. Um at the end of the last school year, we had thirty four schools in overflow from a regular program perspective, and we're now down to thirty one schools in overflow, certainly a long way to go still. This is not a place where we want to stay. Um but we're already seeing some of the measures that have been taken and have a positive impact on our ability, the ability of our schools to um receive students and not have to be overflowing them. Modular classroom relocations, I reference again, some that were approved by this board and others that were approved by the government, as well as the addition of new modulars. Another item that we're certainly hopeful to see approvals for later this month. Um and that currently we're in the process of of installing modulars essentially across the city, a large number of modulars um that will have an impact for the new school year, most definitely. And then ultimately, of course, there's the request for those new schools. Those come with the longest lag time, of course, uh because typically we'd see three or four years between the time the school is um announced as being approved before it's delivered. And of course, before the announcement, that would typically be at least a year after you've put in the request so that the government has time to review the provincial requests and then determine what their priorities are.
Trustee Close.
I think I just need a better understanding. So can you confirm that, that what happens if we don't approve this request to to expand CBE's boundaries? So how many students are there currently in those boundaries? I'm starting to get the sense that actually this would be building out and that we would create uh families moving in. And so if we don't approve this request, the possibility exists that certain students get designated to Rocky View. And then as the community builds out even further, which is in the city of Calgary, because they have annexed these lines, then then we would have to transfer them to CBE schools eventually. So can you just help me clarify that challenge I have if we don't approve this annexation or including within CBE?
Through the chair, I I believe much of what you said applies a hundred percent. So I think this is a case where you've got the answer already, trustee Close. Um if we do not make a request to include these new communities into the CBE boundaries, they will stay resident of their current school jurisdiction, namely the Rocky View um school district. And as a result, any students that start showing up within those schools, as we believe will occur based on development progress um effective the twenty five, twenty six school year, would be resident of the Rocky View School Board. Now, they could make an out of boundary request to attend a CBE school, but then at that point in time, if there was space um that we could allow them to attend, um we would not be mandated to provide transportation for for them. And so they would be required to transport themselves to the school where they would have been admitted. Um and so I think, you know, really the consequence there is that I would imagine most Calgarians have an expectation that they were able to attend their um the Calgary Board of of Education School Board, their public school board. And so it is a, it potentially a situation where we might hear from parents and families that do not understand why it is that they're out of boundary. Um and this is the reason why, it's because these lands have not been incorporated within our boundaries and that our boundaries are not contiguous with the city of Calgary boundaries.
Any additional comments or questions? Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding this report? Trustee Hack.
Thank you. I moved to postpone consideration of the motion contained in the revised CBE boundary adjustment Lewisburg and Huxley until March eighteenth, twenty twenty five.
Thank you. Do trustees have any questions about the motion? Trustee May.
Thank you. I'm just wondering um what factor are leading to this motion being put forward and what would the extra time um give us or give you moving this motion?
Go ahead trustee Hack.
Um again, I'd like to reiterate that in debate, um the extra two weeks. Uh we know that hopefully we're receiving um confirmation from provincial government in relation to uh any possible capital announcements that CBE would be receiving, and I need that extra information.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh trustee Close.
I can withdraw. I had a very similar question. I'm not sure that the timing, uh what information is is provided, but she's answered that.
Okay, thank you. So the motion on the floor is uh a movement to postpone consideration of the motion contained in the revised CBE boundary adjustment Lewisburg and Huxley until March eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Trustee Hack, would you please open debate?
Yeah, I believe this to be exceptional circumstances. Um we are already operating at ninety five percent capacity and the board uh knows that a man has brought this forward because of when they would normally recommend these things, I understand, second time. It's always up for us as trustees to understand the impact it would have, considering the context in which we currently live in right now. Our next meeting would only be two weeks away, and hopefully after CBE has heard of what uh new schools provincial government is promising to construct over the next few years. I think it's really important to consider the fragile situation that we're in with capacity at the moment and take into consideration if we have room to reasonably accommodate this growth. These extra two weeks to consider would give us that time to weigh the impact. It's a request that I'm asking as we consider this decision for CBE as a whole, as well as myself personally. I did vote against the last motion to adjust and increase boundaries because I did not feel we had the space in our schools to fit all potential new families. With these extra two weeks, uh I may be able to change perspective based on what CBE receives at a capital announcement. Um and it gives me and hopefully others a chance to be able to be competent in the decision that we are making. I put forward a motion to postpone the two weeks from now, as is my intent not to kill this motion. And I have specified the least amount of time to come back to this decision as a board. I want to think administration will bring this forward in alignment with past practice as to when the board receives these requests. And I appreciate that these um uh this report is coming for a second round and that is substantial work that has already gone into the report to align with provincial government direction. I asked the board to postpone uh this issue for further discussion on March eighteenth. Please allow me this time to do so, as I don't have all the context information to make a reasonable decision. And I don't believe we have the information to make a best decision for families that we currently serve. I believe it would be disingenuous to CBE families to make a rushed decision on this because it can and will affect budgets around busing and capacity issues. I don't believe this is a decision that is required to be submitted on a timeline, and I'm hoping that two weeks would not be delaying it if we choose to move forward with this um to be able to incorporate those students into CBE come uh next week.
Thank you trustee Hack. Are there trustees wishing to enter first round of debate? Trustee Bukedinovich.
Yeah, I'm mulling how I will vote. Kind of the sticking point for me is that these folks really, they would consider themselves Calgarians. They, I'm pretty sure if you ask any of them, they would say that they're they're building a home in Calgary and then as such, they have an expectation that their students should be eligible to attend public schools in Calgary and 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 so that would be the CBE. Uh and and I I just think that's what people expect, that the boundaries of the public school system should be contiguous with the boundaries of the city. And and then the the fact that we are already over ten percent over our ideal um utilization, so the way the provincial government calculates utilization, eighty five percent is a sweet spot where um below that, we get financially penalized for having schools um uh that have less than eighty five percent utilization, but once we have schools above eighty five percent utilization, then they get they get to feel packed. So we're already feeling that. We're at ninety five percent system wise, we're already ten percent above what would be the ideal utilization. But the utilization is not the same thing as as uh as as full capacity. So we we have schools in our system, many schools, where they have hundred and twenty percent system in school utilization, hundred and forty percent, I think I saw for one one school utilization. We have a number of different utilization rates, so it's not like at one hundred, we're like, that's it, we have to start rejecting students. I don't think we're at the point where we're rejecting students, but it's true that we're to comfortably accommodate them, we should be getting our system um utilization down to eighty five percent. But I'm still stuck on this point that, you know, if if you live in Calgary, you should be able to have an expectation that your kids are within the Calgary bounds. So I'm I'm weighing how to vote, looking forward to hearing more debate because at this point I feel I could go either way. So wanted to hear more from my colleagues.
Thank you trustee Bukedinovich. Trustee May.
Thank you. Um I'll just share I'm a bit conflicted because, you know, we always want to be the first school in a community, we want it to be the first CBE school, we want them to to go to CBE schools. But this isn't the only community that would have a different boundary. I'll share in one of my words, I actually have a section that is not, that is CBE or the city of Calgary boundary, but is not CBE. And so it's not the first time that would ever happen. Um and then I also heard that we might have blowback from citizens because they want to be at a CBE school and think they're going to a CBE school. But I'll share that we have, we would expect, we will still get blowback regardless. And so I have many new communities, and so I hear from families that want transportation immediately in their community, and we can't offer that due to safety and concerns. Um I also know that people want their kids to attend a school close to home, and so until we hear new developments or new um new capital plans from the government, we don't know if we'll have the space for them to be closely and to have cohorts together. And so I am concerned there. Um and so with the capacity concerns and transportation concerns and population concerns, um I would approve of this postponement motion, and so hopefully then we can have our capital announcements from the government and just make a better and more informed decision to support our families and students. And so I know this isn't an easy thing to talk about because we want to welcome all students, and we do. But I think there is a very real crunch in transportation and cost issues that we need to be alive to.
Thank you trustee May. Trustee Close.
I'm struggling with the postponement um to wait on information about a new capital announcements because the information that I'm also intrigued with is whether Rocky View could accommodate this easily. And I don't believe that's my decision. I'm not going to make a decision based on on whether they have the capacity to accept students. Um I think I'm leaning towards the duty and responsibility that the city of Calgary has expanded its boundaries and um if we have a problem with that, I think the conversation we should be having is with the city and how they develop and expand Calgary. So um I'm not sure the postponement will give me information to 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 make a decision of not expanding our boundaries or expanding our boundaries. I think I'm landing on the side that right now um those boundaries are within Calgary, and we have a duty and responsibility to provide the the first choice of school in for CBE.
Trustee Dennis.
Thank you, Chair. Um and thank you for the thoughtful comments from my colleagues and for trustee Hack for bringing this motion forward, just so even this brief conversation could have just so even this brief conversation could happen and around what it might look like to delay. I'm inclined to, I guess, not delay the motion and primarily because of some of the comments that were made, you know, by Trustee Bukedinovich and Trustee Close. Although I really appreciate, you know, and value the other comments that were made. They're very thoughtful and I think I agree with much of it. You know, these folks are already within the City of Calgary limits and right now we find ourselves out of alignment. And so I think that we would be wise to, you know, put ourselves in alignment with the City of Calgary boundaries. And I would agree with Trustee Close that this is a conversation, a broader conversation to be had with the City of Calgary and what does expansion look like? And, you know, the impacts that it has on the Calgary Board of Education and our ability to be able to serve students.
Well, to round out first round of debate, I also really appreciate the conversation. And I think I'm comfortable providing the requested extra time by Trustee Hack to postpone this in hopes that we are hearing capital announcements that can put your mind at ease. And, you know, although I absolutely agree that families living within the City of Calgary expect to go to a City of Calgary or a Calgary Board of Education school is absolutely valid. So hopefully a two-week postponement, if that passes, is still reasonable. Might not solve the problem, but it might give us a bit more information. Is there anyone else wishing or to enter second round of debate? Trustee Bukedinovich?
I'm not even sure if I would fully agree. I mean, why I'm always, I think it's important for us to have open communications with the City of Calgary. I'm not even sure if this particular issue is necessarily a City of Calgary debate because this is about people moving to Calgary. So if people want to move to Calgary, that's people and people having babies in Calgary and just more people wanting to build homes in Calgary. And that's not a policy issue, that's just where people want to live. And either there's, if they want to move to Calgary, there's two options. You either move somewhere where there are existing neighborhoods or you move to new land that becomes part of the City of Calgary. And I mean, just as some trustees hear from people who are living in newer areas that are surprised that they haven't yet been incorporated into CBE. I also, on the other hand, hear from people who live within existing neighborhoods in Calgary who say to me, does the CBE talk to the City of Calgary about all of these infills and the densification? And is the CB pushing back to say we don't have room in our schools in the core to accommodate all these students as the population of established neighborhoods increases? So people say that both ends, we're feeling that there's not enough school space in the outer ring. There's not enough school space in the core. We just need more school space, period. Like that's the bottom line is that we have definitely, we're experiencing a space crunch in Calgary. And we do not have the space we need to comfortably accommodate all students. And that is a challenge, but is this the tool to address that challenge? Definitely, I continue to remain committed to advocating for the provincial government to build all 13 schools that are on our capital plan request for this year and as well as the one major modernization. Those are vital to so that we can have the spaces we need. That's a tool. I can fully support this one. I'm still wavering back and forth.
Thank you, Trustee Bukedinovich. Anyone else wishing to enter second round of debate? I'm not seeing anyone. So Trustee Hack, would you like to close debate?
Yeah, I've heard two things here that we can't control. We can't control building new schools. It's provincial government who makes those decisions. And I know we do as the board. And the other thing we can't control is when the city expands. What we can control is our borders. So I'm asking, and I don't feel this isn't an unreasonable request. And it's not a motion that is required to meet a specific deadline like many of our reports. I want to urge my fellow trustees to in favor of this motion as a reasonable step to make sure that all of us have the information that we need to make a good decision. I would ask each of you to consider the urgency to move the boundary change motion today or if it could just wait two more weeks so that all of us can feel like we have clarity on this decision.
Thank you, Trustee Hack. I will now call on each of you individually to indicate whether you're in favor or opposed to the motion. Trustee Close?
Opposed.
Thank you. Trustee Dennis?
Thank you. Opposed.
Thank you. Trustee Hack?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee May?
In favor.
Thank you, Trustee Bukedinovich.
Opposed.
Thank you. And I vote in favor of the motion. So that motion fails. That was trustees Close, Dennis and Bukedinovich opposed and Hack may and Vulture in favor. Is there a trustee wanting to make a motion? Trustee Dennis?
Thank you. Sorry, took me a second here to get to my mic. I would like to make the motion that the Board of Trustees authorizes the Chair to correspond with the Minister of Education as per attachment one to this report.
Thank you. Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees authorizes the Chair to correspond with the Minister of Education as per attachment one to this report. Trustee Dennis, would you please open debate?
Sure, happy to do so. Thank you, Chair. As was mentioned in the opening remarks from Superintendent Breton, this is largely a motion of technicality. We are reiterating our October 16th, 2024 decision, which was to request the incorporation of Huxley and then, which is not changing. But we are requesting an adjustment to the Lewisburg initial request from October 16th in order to comply with government direction, indicating that only full quarters can be requested when considering a boundary adjustment. I'm in support of this motion in large part because of the technicality piece, but also because it does still create closer alignment with the City of Calgary and the communities that we serve. These are residents of the City of Calgary and their expectations would be that they would be attending a City of Calgary school. And so I'm looking for my colleagues to also support this motion so we can move forward.
Thank you, Trustee Dennis. Are there trustees who wish to enter first round of debate? Trustee Close?
Two things to share out loud, I guess. One is I'm intrigued and curious and a little bit concerned about the language of controlling our boundaries. And the reason I'm concerned about it is there is a movement to, towards not having designated residents and vouchers. And so I do not want to entertain that. And I'm struggling with entertaining that we would take action to control our boundaries. And I'm fully aware that this motion could fail as well, which means that she'll come back to us probably on March 18th to, with information that we might have on our capital plan. But I don't see, I don't see the postponement. It doesn't sit well with me at this point of making a decision not to support continuous boundaries with CBE in the City of Calgary.
Thank you, Trustee Close. Go ahead, Trustee Bukedinovich.
Well, yeah, Nancy, you, Trustee Close, I mean, sorry, you raise a great, a good point there about this. Why are we having a conversation about controlling the CBE's borders? I mean, I get that we get to vote on this, but why are we having that? It's not a conversation I would anticipate, would have anticipated having. So that gives me pause. And and I'm understanding is that if this motion were to fail today, it doesn't come back in two weeks. The board has spoken and we have not agreed not to expand the boundaries and to what end. So I would encourage all trustees to vote in favor of this because that would be, I think, a precedent that might have unintended consequences for which we are unprepared if we don't vote in favor of expanding our boundaries in line with the contiguous boundaries of the city in which we live and the city that we serve, the city's growth doesn't serve us. We serve, we educate every student every day in Calgary. So I vote, I encourage my fellow trustees, while I was conflicted on the previous motion, in this one, I'm hoping that we have a majority who are in favor. This is, this is a different motion and this one, I think, should have a majority, if not all, in favor because we already, we already have a space crunch. That is our current reality. We are currently living with it, with the reality that we have a space crunch and we urgently need new schools. And it will continue into the foreseeable future because even if all 13 new school requests and one major modernization are all approved in the next few weeks, we know that the following year will have additional, I anticipate will have additional items on our capital plan request because that is how great the need is in Calgary. So we already have a space crunch regardless.
Thank you, Trustee Bukedinovich. Trustee May?
Thank you. I will be voting in favor. This was originally approved by the Board of Trustees in October, as others have mentioned. And I do agree it is our duty to provide education for students in Calgary and this boundary adjustment does make sense. But I also think that this discussion was valuable to highlight our ongoing capacity concerns and transportation challenges. I would encourage residents to have frank conversations with their elected councillor regarding site readiness, site design and influence area structure plans to share the importance of public education in their community. I would also encourage residents to advocate with their MOA regarding the importance of infrastructure funding in a rapidly growing student populations. And so I think this is just a piece in the puzzle that we're trying to demonstrate longevity and capacity concerns and that we are under strain. And so this is just one part of a bigger piece of the system that I think we need to be aware of.
Thank you, Trustee May. Anyone else for first round of debate? Okay, we'll move to second round of debate. Anyone wishing to enter second round? Trustee Close, go ahead.
I just want to echo appreciation for what Trustee May has said, but also Trustee Bukedinovich, thanks for correcting me. I was wrong. Like if this fails, it fails. You're right. It doesn't necessarily come back. So I do appreciate the conversation. It's complex. And I appreciate the advocacy that all of us need to do as Calgarians in meeting the building needs and transportation needs that we have in our city. So thank you for that, Trustee May.
Anyone else for second round? Go ahead, Trustee Hack.
Thank you. I appreciate this debate. I'm still struggling because I don't have all the relevant information that I feel I need to make this decision. There are unintended consequences of always expanding and expanding at the rate at which the city does. Means more lotteries, more school boundary changes. I really look forward to hearing all the schools announced for Calgary from the provincial government. And you're right, it doesn't, it doesn't change that we need to educate everyone and that's the purpose of public education. I just, I'm still struggling because I don't have that piece of the puzzle for me yet. I do believe in, in public education and it does sort of become good and everybody wants to be a part of CBE because we do so well. So that is something to be proud of. Thank you.
Anyone else for second round? I'll just add that as Trustee Dennis mentioned in her opening, that it really normally to us is just a technical detail, but it seems more significant just because we are seeing such pressures on the system. So, but obviously we want to serve the needs of all Calgarians as Trustee Bukedinovich mentioned and, you know, welcome all our students within the area of Calgary. So I'll be supporting the motion. Trustee Dennis, would you like to close?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. Again, expressing sincere appreciation for all of the viewpoints that were shared from the time this report was introduced at this meeting till now. Really, really appreciate the thoughtfulness of my colleagues in this and the excellent questions. We're asking the right things and we're wondering about the right things. We are in an interesting place right now. The intersectionality of a growing city, of folks making a decision to move to Calgary and to make a home here, also looking for, you know, where is their CBE school? And certainly our lack of schools. I think Trustee May made an excellent plea, not only to her colleagues, but also to the community as a whole, to please, you know, walk alongside us and to advocate for site readiness from your councillors and also to be continuing to advocate to MLAs to have the schools that the CBE asks for in our capital plan be built. We have a data-driven process. We know that we need the schools. We're not asking for schools because we think that we, we just feel like having them. We do need them. And so like I say, we're just at an interesting intersection here when we look at growth and lack of space. But ultimately, you know, these, these folks that live in these communities are already Calgarians. And it's important that we bring them also into the boundary of the Calgary Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Dennis. I will now call on each of you individually to indicate whether you're in favor or opposed to the motion. Trustee Close?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Dennis?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Hack?
Opposed.
Thank you. Trustee May?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Bukedinovich?
In favor.
And I also vote in favor of the motion, so that is carried with Trustee Hack opposed. That brings us to the consent agenda for our meeting. There were no items pulled from consent and as such, all items will be deemed to be approved with the agenda. The board has four land, four strategic planning, two labor and one legal matter to deal with in private following the public portion of this meeting. That brings us to the conclusion of this portion of the agenda. I would like to thank all of you who joined us for this meeting. Our next public board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, March 18th, 2025.